This was my life.
I think we sit down and talk.
Alright, I got six stories. Let's go ahead and call the main order. Let's start with the roll call.
Jonathan Lee.
Marcus Bush.
Lori Lott.
Trishir.
Tom Parker. We got Eric Johnson on line.
Kayla Peck.
Todd Surrill.
Brittany Corlant.
Stephanie Griggs.
Taylor Stan.
Jay Bizar.
Andy Allen.
Jenna Emery.
Oh, Alex Geier.
Everybody?
Yep.
Okay. Joe Geier.
Amber Geier.
Denise Campita.
Denise Robbins.
Wendy Buckratt.
Lauren Bonner.
Becky Van Gogh.
Harsh Wicker.
Jennifer Kay.
Ben Kay.
Don Kruger.
Steve Wexler.
Louis Blasner.
Michelle Kruger.
Chris Chosler.
Abby Hicks.
Kristen.
Amy Reiser.
Welcome.
Alright, let's go with the pledge of week.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good news.
Just to say, you have been one.
I can stand right up here so that way they can see on the TV. Alright, this is Mr. Jacob Wexner and he is our third grade Andalusia student of the month. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about him. He's my favorite, right? Jacob is in third grade. His parents are Steve and Melissa Wexner. They have, he has a little sister named Bailey Wexner. She is seven. Things he likes to do outside of school: baseball, football, wrestling, fishing, woodworking, and riding four-wheelers. School activities: rocket fuel resting, wrestling, Illinois City baseball, Rock Ridge Youth Flag Football, and his favorite subject in school is music. His favorite things to eat are pizza and breakfast, hash browns, eggs, and toast specifically. His favorite Booker movie is the I Survive book series. His favorite class memory this year was the fort party in this buckdrop room. Three qualities: he cares about others, he's hardworking, and he's helpful, which I would agree. He has the sweetest exit from the vehicle every morning. It's so cute. Honors and awards. He said he couldn't think of any, but I can't imagine that there isn't any. I'm sure there's a book or a baseball, football, one of those things. In his free time, he likes to play with Legos. Future college or career plan: he would like to either go to the University of Iowa or become a power lineman. Someone that he looks up to is his parents because they are wise and he loves you. And he said that was it. That's all he wanted people to know. A couple of things about Jacob is from his buckdrop. Jacob is polite and courteous when speaking to adults and peers. He loves to build things. He is always offering to help fix things around the classroom. One time he even offered to fix the ceiling fan when the chain fell off. He's also fascinated by the Titanic, which is really cool. Ms. Frieden showed me that in second grade. She built her, first grade? Yeah, built her a stepstool to reach the water pump for some of her friends. The board? The calendar. Yes, so friends who are a little bit shorter can reach the calendar. Ms. Stigman said that Jacob always shows great effort and enthusiasm in PE, no matter whether you are participating in games, practicing new skills, or encouraging your friends. You lead by example. You're not just focused on doing your best, but you also help others and show kindness to everyone around you. He brings a positive attitude to everything he does, and your teachers and classmates can always count on you to make the classroom and gym a better place. Keep up the fantastic work. We're all very proud of you. Mrs. Hicks. Jacob continues to be one of the most respectful students I teach. He is kind to teachers and students and looks for ways to be helpful in all situations. He gives his best effort in music class and has become a very good rhythm reader. I appreciate that Jacob makes sure the room is reset and ready for the next class before he lines up to make my job easier. He is a great kid and very deserving of student of the month. Congratulations. As than that leaves, Mrs. Meyer. Jacob leads by example and is a great student role model for his third grade peers. He is attentive in class, participates in discussions, and shares his ideas. He is kind to other students in Andalusia and is always respectful to staff members. Jacob very much deserves to be the recipient of the student of the month. Keep doing great things, Jacob. We are so proud of you. Congratulations. 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 Very well said.
Alright, Mrs. Graves.
Alright, let's go now. Alrighty. The faculty and staff of Rockridge High School are pleased to announce that Alex Geier has been selected as the February student of the month. Alex is a senior at Rockridge High School and is the son of Joel and Amber Geier of Taylor Ridge. Alex reports that his favorite class this semester is our new dual credit statistics course with Ms. Clark. He is a member of the National Honor Society, Student Council, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and the Great Matters Collective. He is also a member of the Rock Ridge Cross Country Team. Outside of school, Alex has employed at a lot of places: Atomic Coffee Bar, favorite drink?
Ocean.
Ocean, alright. The Hitman Sports Complex in Snowstar. He attends the Believers Together Church in Moline where he serves with special people encountering Christ youth group. And in his spare time, he likes to go to the gym and go shopping. I don't know where he has spare time, but... Our staff members had the following things to say in support of Alex's selection of student of the month. Social studies teacher and Great Matters advisor, Ms. Brandi Neese nominated Alex for the student of the month recognition. She stated Alex is a team leader of the Great Matters chapter and is also an active member of NHS. I frequently see Alex working to fill food bags and tidying up the rocket closet. He is willing to volunteer to help out Ms. Pontac and I whenever we ask for his assistance. Congratulations. Spanish teacher, Mr. David Stroud added Alex Geier is a student in my Spanish four class. Since the beginning of the year, Alex has actually participated in classroom discussions and provided feedback promoting Spanish learning. He is a hardworking student who turns in his assignments on time and prides himself on submitting quality work. In summary, Alex is a pleasure to have in class and I wish him all the best moving forward. I'm sure he will be successful in whatever path he chooses. Math teacher, Ms. Angie DeCarroll said Alex has a very kind and quiet personality in my class and calculus, he is a hard worker and very focused. He will go do great things in the future and congratulations on him on the student of the month. And lastly, our business teacher and former cross-country coach, Ms. Patricia Graves, reported Alex is a student of high character who strives to do his best academically. He takes school seriously and he wants to learn. He was a great captain on the cross-country team and enjoys supporting his teammates. Alex plans to attend the University of Illinois next fall to major in advertising and marketing. So congratulations, Alex.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You're welcome.
Alright, Marcus, you have students of the month or employees of the month? Employees of the month for the ROE are Michelle Blazer from Taylor Ridge and became a member of Andalusia. We also have one at the junior high that wish to remain nameless. We all mentioned we had fire views for... Employees of the month here at the junior high. So congratulations. Alright, that concludes the good news for this month. A couple items on here will table for next month when the people are here, Katie and Jonathan Paul. If you're only here for the good news, this is a great time to exit. If you want to stick around for the whole meeting, you're welcome to. Okay, at this time we'll put the floor up for public comments. Seeing none, we'll move right on. Consent agenda. Everybody have a chance to look at consent agenda. Were there any items on there that you wanted to remove and talk about? Alright, hearing none, I've obtained a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Most curious. Okay. Moving on to the presentations. Mr. Bizarri, floor of yours.
My understanding is that you guys have the link to the paperwork that that did, so I've got extra copies. I don't know that I have enough for everybody. I don't have anything to present on the screen because as you'll see, I drew a book at our board, so I'll just hand this around and assuming you guys will have that. You've seen so far a lot of data from assessments, and so I kind of thought I'd give you that data, but not really go over it, so even though this is a data presentation. In talking a little bit and being new at this position, I've asked a lot of questions, but it seems like every time I ask a question, I get three more questions. So that's kind of what this packet of information is, kind of questions that I've encountered as I'm kind of going along through things and then... So I'm not going to really highlight the data, other than from what I understand so far in understanding in class and math math and math reading and all the other acronyms that come along with K12 land. Our numbers aren't where we would like them to be, but they are growing in the right direction. And that my understanding is that in the spring, our hope is that we see the growth that we're looking for and continue to get there. And then even today, I attended an ROE principals' meeting at Hamilton, which I understand that you guys went to Hamilton to go over for. So it's kind of nice for me to see that building and be there a little bit. And one of our discussion items was with math testing. We're kind of shooting for what's kind of considered the green or the blue. And the big discussion was, yeah, but apparently Illinois is like the fourth highest or toughest as far as cut scores as to what its meet or exceeds. And so if, since we're right across the aisle here from Iowa, their meets or exceeds cut scores are quite lower than what the Illinois cut scores are. So even if you start looking at all the data, it's where cut scores are and where different things are that kind of lead to what is a meet or what is an exceed. So for example, we're kind of shooting for that green or that blue meets or exceeds in math testing, whereas in Iowa, the yellow would be considered meets or exceed. So it's drastically different sometimes when you start looking at data. So I like that. That is an important thing, but you also kind of have to understand all the things that go along with that as well. And that's kind of where it takes me. On page one, those were my three, when Marcus started out, hey, I need some goals for you from this school year. I don't even know what I'm doing yet, so I don't know where to get the goals at. And so I looked at our five essential survey. And that was another discussion at today's, today's meeting is, you know, there's a lot of information that goes into that five essential survey. And so I looked at the five essential survey and okay, where are we lacking the most in making an impact? And so my three main goals here that I highlighted: improve the school climate, improve student motivation or engagement with the assessments, and then become more... I've taught high school my entire career and all the different moving components that are in K12 land are just amazing. Never really thought of it. All the different things are part of it. So especially those first two, improving school climate and then improving student motivation, that's a lot that deals with the data itself. I mean, if you can improve school climate, and I don't, I can't put any data on that right now or theory, but if you've got an improved school climate and then you increase the student motivation, chances are it's going to help you out even more. And don't get me wrong, curriculums are important and expectations are important, all that stuff, but the climate and student motivation factors in as well. And I knew a lot about that when I was at high school, ACT and SAT and some of your parents, and you know the emails I sent about that kind of stuff. And I'm learning a whole new game when it comes to math testing and even the IAR, because remember the IAR, which is how our elementaries are measured, we don't even do it at the K12 level. But hopefully we're preparing our K12 students to eventually take that IAR test when they get to the third grade level. But then you have to become an expert at IAR and I haven't become an expert at that yet. So that's actually one of the many questions that I had. So those three goals, and then I put the link to the five essential survey, because that survey, it shows up on our school report card. It's online right now. Anybody can get into our, anybody looking to move into our district can get on our website and get to that five essential survey. So that's kind of where my goals were at. And then all the data, you can look at it if you want to. But my understanding is that it will hopefully get better where we're headed. Remember, we're looking at new math curriculum as well. One thing that came out of today's meeting that I had, again, this is just something that happened coincidentally today, is that the principal at Hamilton said, you know that the IAR assessment is basically forty percent right? We all kind of looked at each other. Because part of what I'm hearing from our teachers are questions about our new curriculum. Well, is it, is it doing enough in writing or is it doing enough in these areas? So even though we have a new curriculum and that we'll have a new math curriculum, we still got to talk about it. We still got to see where there might be gaps and where there might be differences. How does that curriculum line up to the IAR standards? That's kind of boring because when I, when I taught high school, everybody said, well, are you worried about the Illinois State standards? No, I'm worried about the ACT standards because ACT is how our schools are measured. So yeah, we can look at Illinois State standards, but the IAR is how our grade schools are going to be measured. So we need to look at the IAR standards and what's important with those standards. And our hope is, is that the IAR standards are what children should be known, know, and move on. So all of this data kind of swims around our head, which is kind of why I wanted to present it the way I did. Alright, and then, so I would skip over and then I have lots of questions that you guys can look over. But in my inexperienced, but hopefully objective view, the one thing I wanted to point out, and then I've heard, no offense to people here, but I've heard is we're going to have a wow factor to our entrance. Wow factor, right? I think we really need a wow factor to our library and we need a wow factor to our scheme. Because in my opinion, a library is going to take your reading instruction to the next level. I had our honorable board president here, a player way back in the day in basketball, and I could take him so far when he attended practice every day. But he was going to get a lot better if he went outside of practice and played on the go, got to the playground, got to the Y, got to wherever. And we can do all the reading instruction we want, but if the kids aren't reading on their own, if they're not motivated to read through a good librarian or a good library, they're only going to get that far. And in my experience with ACT and SAT, the best readers score bias because it's a reading test. And IAR is going to be a reading test. And SAT, ACT is going to be a reading test. So I hope our scheme and our library have wow factors to them as well and the people that we employ. I think it's going to make a big difference into where our, where our sport is going is getting those readers in. No offense, everybody knows our library right now, our scheme right now, like the K5 level are pretty much non-existent. Then on the, on the next page, where I've been really kind of focusing then is kind of how to motivate and reward students. And I got there, as I'm learning, the ultimate red flag. Okay, so we have students that are meeting or exceeding, but maybe they're not meeting or exceeding, but are they growing? Well, maybe they aren't growing a lot, but are they growing a little? Okay, they're growing a little, or are they not growing at all? Are those the kids that are getting extra services? And that's what we're trying to find with this app. We don't want anybody to fall through the practice, right? So if somebody seems to be really struggling, we don't want them to get lost. And from what I've seen, it's amazing how many progress monitoring and different things that we do to make sure that we're not losing kids. I'd like to at least tell you from a perspective of someone who had no idea what was going on before, is it's amazing how much effort Ms. Emery and TSS, the assessments, the teachers, make sure that no kid is getting left behind. There's always an opportunity to know that. So what I've done is then, it's kind of a fun thing, but the thing that's happening is that with the help of our teachers, we kind of developed a little student council we meet about every Wednesday. And they've helped me put together a kickoff to our winter assessments, so we have a little assembly, one time we invited Great Matters group. And then we'll have a certificate assembly. And so those are kind of the back pages, how that all looks. Because I think if I can conquer the student climate or the climate of the school and then just increase that motivation from students, where all of a sudden now, that daunting math test or daunting end class test seems not to be as daunting and they give their best efforts, then they're going to truly get the data that we're looking for. That's really reliable. And then we can go back and look at curriculum, or we can look back at teacher instruction. And so that's just what I wanted to share with you. There's a lot of different questions in there, and that's why I kind of sent it out to you early. I would encourage you to ask lots of questions, send me an email. If I don't know, there's a good chance I won't. I'll ask somebody else and they'll find the answer for you. The data is important, but a lot of the stuff that goes around the data is also equally perhaps not so important. Any questions? I sent a lot to you. It's kind of... Alright, thanks.
I do like the idea of that student council. Can we do that or is it just Illinois City?
I, I...
We've got some interesting proposals for the K5. I make sure I order them for this, which every time I get... Stumps. 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 Indoor, indoor water plant? That's from A and Undergrowth.
Well, they got a limit, so it's probably nice to at least hear what they have to say.
It really is. It is good to sit down once a week. It's a new set every, every quarter, so it's twelve each quarter, and it does give me a chance to connect with them a little bit better, but... And they come up, they come up with some really good ideas sometimes.
Thanks, Jerry.
Yep.
Alright, financial reports.
January is a pretty slow month, so we don't have a lot for you, but as you can see, the fund balances, we have pretty minimal change in those fund balances. So we did receive the last, and final part, rate tax distribution for our counties, so we've now received all that for both counties and then we don't see any more about the year. Looking to the cash flow report, again, very little change. You'll see that we still have that high projection education fund, but I want to point out that in the revenue, if you look at that percent variance from the budget, it's not changed much more than five percent. So it's just a tiny, like we talked about, that revenue that last few months has a lot of change, so that's good. I expect that in the year we'll be closer to what we were expecting about. Operations and maintenance and transportation are still looking good. Even though if you look at operations and maintenance expenditures, they're sometimes coming in high this time of year. We're still about ten percent under, so that's good. And then if you look at the Blacktop Bank and Trust interest, it continues to go down as we reported to you every month. And Marcus and I had a discussion about moving more money to our PMA accounts. So we typically work with PMA to do this bigger investments and treasury bills, but we do have our, we have two liquid funds. One is completely liquid. The other is called a liquid max, so it's committed for ten days and then it's liquid. So it's slightly higher than the other one, but we're earning about four point three to four point five there. So in order for us to have it to use for our expenses, we would have the cost of wiring the money back and forth, but I do believe that like it would be advantageous for us to be the way it's at right now. It'll take a little bit closer monitoring on what we need, maybe looking one or two come out, but if Blacktop can't come up a little or match it, that would be...
What's the difference in the industry?
About half a percent.
Yeah, that's real money.
Yeah. So, and then further, we don't have any change in those big investments right now, but come this month, we are planning to use PMA to invest the bond proceeds. So we would look into a couple of different options and they, they provide the best rate and monitoring that will help us capture the most out of it and still not be caught off guard by any proof that I need it back. So anyways, that's all. You'll see that coming up here in the next month. And then lastly, to the service report, we had mentioned we were hoping that it would kind of out that we'll be close to break even, which you can see we did. And in December, people aren't putting a lot of money into those, but come January, back to school, we saw those deposits go back up, so we're doing pretty good right now.
Any questions for Jamie? Thank you. Okay, FOIA requests.
Two. One is one that we get, you say we get one every year from teacher retirement?
Yes. Ask them to retire.
Just checking. Ourselves and other school districts get a FOIA request. There are a lot beginning here from, I don't know what it is, from the same editor, Paul Wang, it goes around at Sound of Quincy. It seems to be everywhere. Want to find out that, a lot of schools are finding out that it's AI-generated?
It doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist. So we've worked with our ROE superintendent group and we all have the same response, and so the response is asking that you contact the district office to ensure that they know who you are and they will provide the information to kind of get it. We get it. That's the same response we get, but we've got some very unique ones from Mr. Wang. If it is, reach out and we'll get you what the information you request.
Very good. Alright, schematic design.
And that's for a board. And then... Bring it up for Marcus. Yep. Wonderful. I'm tailing up. I don't appear to do all the hard stuff, but I will, I will, I will start. Why stop now? You did all the other hard stuff. So this is the, the point of the, in the project where we're completing what we call by contract schematic design. That is the first of two designing phases and then the next phase is construction documents, which is really stop talking about the users and the district and start talking to the folks Andy's going to be working with so they know what we mean when we say wall, stuff like that. So as you open, as the first couple of pages kind of go over what is schematic design, where we are in the process, and how, what's to come here. So for, in layman's terms, I've always talked about schematic design is we know how many of what you want. We know how, where they are, where those things are in relation to other things. An overall kind of square footage, size of the building, where it sits on the site. Beginning to solve some of the really big things, like where water goes, where utilities come in, if it's one-story, two-story. And sort of a very high level, what it's going to look like, at least for next year, to give you an idea of that. So we've been working with Taylor, and Marcus and the team, really kind of going back and forth. We had a great conversation with Building Grounds last week, and went through, through the concept. So at this point, we're gonna present this as the official piece. We've really marched about halfway through the design process, which is in two stages, the next one being design development. How we say, it's sort of like, this is when you set the date for the wedding. All the things that come after it are what makes the wedding, the wedding. You've got a vague idea at this point, and you know how much, how many people you're gonna invite, how much you're gonna call at this wedding, so.
Wedding planner side, yeah.
Yeah, I am not a wedding planner, I, I've managed to do it once in my life, and I was terrible. So the first thing we like to do, and this is, I am not an artsy person by upbringing, but I do believe it is important to write things down that will guide you through the process. At some point, we will get to a, are we gonna do this, are we gonna do this? And by writing down sort of the direction that we've got from the team, and are sharing with our team, it keeps the, the game of telephone from getting out of whack. As many hands are going to now become part of the team. Andy's got folks that are gonna be part of it, I've had folks, you know, hopes to have some more folks helping her out along through this. So we, we've worked out this idea, and it's going to guide us sometimes very directly and sometimes indirectly. And this was gleaned from the conversation you've had with the staff and team over the, the last few months. So in a big picture, you can read all this, this is as much a reminder to us, and all the people that are gonna be working on your behalf going forward, the big picture is about kids, it's about making connections, it's about building this community. And, and really a unique educational community, really bringing together the three schools, the three cultures, the all the communities of Rock Ridge. And I really was inspired by Taylor and her team in that presentation they gave a few weeks ago. So we put it in our book, but it's really there. So some of the, some of the ways that we, you'll see this, and again, this is really to guide a lot of the, the team going through this. It was great, Marcus told me. Is this idea of layers, I, I know-
Great time for John to show us.
When we were, when we were working with the staff, we went through a lot of tours, a lot of the things that, that we heard were about the interactions of students, grade levels, communities, and different skills throughout the day. And so this idea of layering, and sort of what makes up this school, is a lot of different things that have, they come from a different area, or they may be a different age, but the benefit of this school system and the, the small schools that you enjoyed over the years, they work and they are special because of some of these layers and interactions. So we wanted to use the design to encourage that, as was mentioned earlier, is, there's a lot of things about wow in that, but learning is really the emphasis of this. So those pieces, I'll skip through a few, transparency and translucence, we've got that on there. And that's gonna be something as we go through this next layer in design, balancing the things that we know are gonna improve learning. We know they're gonna improve the environment, and when you talk about creating culture and engaging students, which was a lot of that message. If students want to be there, and they enjoy being there, learning naturally happens, whether, and you're, you're all along for the ride. So wanting to do that transparency, and being able to observe what's going on, being able to know if it's raining outside, or if it's bright and sunny outside, or if it's snowy and, and we're gonna be out of school tomorrow. Those are all parts of creating an environment. Mixing that with safety and sanity, being able to not have too many distractions. Those are really some of our key things going into this. The teachers both want an open, inviting place, but they want it to be safe and free of distractions. So we're gonna have Fred Neal on that one, so that's where we put it down. So with that, moving into what, what have we done with these kind of guiding principles? And I'm gonna start with the outlay of, of the site, and for those that were, had heard about our last discussions, when we had the little models and things. This, the biggest thing that came out of that was really creating a connection between this building and the existing building to allow some, some highly beneficial things like shared secure resources, access in an emergency, and ability of the junior senior high to use the resources that are being built here, especially gym and storm shelter. So we went back to the drawing, drawing board, literally, and began to adapt those concepts that we showed last time to how it would work in a direct connection. Worked with our structural folks and our engineering folks to make sure that we make the connections the way would be least impactful and costly. I think we talked about long corridor and some things like that last time, those are expensive. It's a very technical term. Did not move a lot on the educational side, moved a lot on the dollar side. So what we did is we slid the building north from where we've been talking about it, and utilized the natural connection that comes off of the gyms to really work them together. And the athletic thing really sets up future potential for expanding some programs that would support the athletics and arts down the road. Cleans up a lot of things on the site. And I think most importantly, and I hope it never has to be used, but you will have access, direct access for every student to a, a FEMA storm shelter in an emergency, without going outside, without even knowing. So I don't know too many communities that have that. And it's a, it's just a wonderful benefit of, of attaching the building. So with that, we have talked about, you know, how do we make drop-off and pickup more efficient now? Looking at that, you, you begin to see in the little bubbles, we've got some ideas that we may explore. It's really up to the, the district how far we go down that, but we don't, if we can solve some other longstanding challenges, like pick off the drop-off and front doors and signage, now would be the time to do it. And as you see, we've created a, a very two-sided building. It really is gonna act as one campus with very distinct separations, which I think is gonna be a, a great thing for the community long-term, especially that first-time visitor, when they know where to go, depending on who they're to see. And with that, keeping most, if not all of the site circulation on your site. Not imposing on your neighbors, not imposing on your, your county roads, and that will be a great improvement for everybody. So we're excited about those potentials, and somehow Taylor was able to squeeze that in with sanitary and all the other things. I just got in to see she still had head hair today. So, and so the big picture, if you go to the next page, having car drop-off on the east side, having bus drop-off on the west side, that allows the bus to go on and make additional drops, I think would be a great thing. We've got a lot of work to do on the site, a lot of things to do on the, I always say this is an architect site plan, the engineers with all their rules, things will, will change that a little bit, but in concept, it's, yeah, this, this for an architecture.
Pretty good for you.
Yeah, pretty good for us. Taking a big view from an engineer, so. So they, they will continue to work on it, and we're gonna continue to work with the staff to make sure we have parking, for all the reasons you need parking, everything from overflow, from high school events to coming to the school in the morning and picking up your kindergarten. But right now, I think we're, we're getting there. And with that, we've got two separate play areas, we've got kind of the bigger kid play area to the south, that to, much to the excitement of Panter Lucia, children everywhere will have a little bit of slope and some things they could, they could slide down and, and keep some of those traditions alive, no graveyard, but something that had to go to make way for the new. And probably more importantly, I think as we, as we begin to move some dirt and some things around, we're gonna have a great environment just south of the building that can kind of be this natural piece that's really important. I know in the plan, early planning with the teachers, to get these kids outside, get them in, falling in love with this wonderful part of the world that has, that are still fonds, and there's still some of the fun things around, and make that an extension of the learning environment. And, and then to the north, there will be a separate little kid play area right off the pre-kindergarten. They have a different set of rules, and quite frankly, I think being elementary school is totally cool with them having their own world up there and have our own world down. So with that, I'll turn it over to the brains of the operation.
Thanks.
Through the actual design.
Okay, so on the next couple of pages is our first floor and second floor. This is a key plan that I can walk everybody through.
I know why I'm fourth.
Oh. So, like we were talking about in another presentation, the wow factor of coming into the building. From the site, you have your car entry and bus entry. All students are entering into the same space, the commons, when they first get to school. There are other opportunities to enter the building, particularly pre-K area. They're off in their own world, they have their own playground, they also have an opportunity for their own entry. A lot of things throughout this building is a possibility. There's a lot of changes in the curriculum, how you're going to function as an entire building. We don't have it all figured out, what we're going to try to do is give you some opportunities to flex around that. So that's just one of those opportunities within the building. When you come into the wow space, this is both student entry, but also visitors' entries. So if you have an event in the gym, all access to the classrooms can be shut off, if that's what you need. And then public only has access to commons, restrooms, and then the gym. What we also have in red in the center of the floor plan is the music room. That could also open up either as a small presentation space, this is a two-story space, so somebody could be looking down from below, or it's all at the same level, it could just be another place to flow and out of the commons, depending on how big of a space that you need. Along with that, on the right-hand side or the eastern side, when I'm saying the public can enter, that is for particularly an event that you unlock both sides of your building. When you're visiting, just for, to drop off your lunch, forgot to get your lunch, you would come into the east side. That big yellow block is administration, and there's a series of doors and technology that allows you to monitor and control how you're entering the building. Specifically, what we like to see is that a lot of days you don't get past reception, drop off or pick up what you need to, or you only go into a conference room. Only until everybody feels comfortable with it, you get access to the rest of the building where the kids are at. Then what we're working in is pods, so there's four pods overall. The northernmost pod includes pre-K, and then in red, STEM and arts and administration. What we were trying to push was music, STEM and art be all on the same floor and near each other, so we can maybe start working with that. STEM in particular, because we don't necessarily have much of a program right now for STEM. This is another spot where we are going to pack it full of flexibility, and trying to make sure that it works with everything that's coming and is to come when we're well out of the building. So it's, it's another viewpoint straight from the commons, but what's in it is still up in the air as we get into design development, into those, into those details. The southernmost pod is kindergarten through first grade. Big idea here is having a learning commons, so what I saw in the paperwork that we were looking at in the last presentation was getting these kids' eyes on things, and this is what that learning commons is, is either seeing classes having a bigger activity out in the commons, or your bookshelves are out there, what have you, what is in that space is what teachers and kids want to focus on that semester, that day, or throughout the year. Stacked on top of that, the second, or, yeah, second through third grade, it's a very, very similar setup. Those corridors are widened and expanded to become a learning common, so you can pull out for intervention or have bigger class spaces. Fourth through fifth is a little bit different, we wanted to make sure we were hitting square footage. So it is more of a typical classroom wing with a corridor down the middle. Our older students would move a little bit more than our younger students, so they would come south into the second floor as their learning common space, or come into the first floor commons, depending on how much space they need to collaborate. I haven't covered the gym much, that is our storm shelter, like Todd mentioned. The size of it, like we calculated, can cover not only pre-K through five, which is required by us, but it naturally, for the size of the gym, can accept all students and staff, we're calculating about 1,200 right now. That includes a small locker room area, a second floor for mechanical space, because that storm shelter has its own entire system to itself, and some offices for PE, or if you have a small competition, for the ref to run. And then the back, number nineteen, is the connection to the junior senior high school. It was important to make sure that staff or other personnel can access the entire facility, but it was to feel like its own building, and that only the people who should be in the know are the ones that know that this is happening in the background. Scattered throughout, little yellow boxes, every single pod, we want to make sure there are facilities both for the students, as in restrooms, but also single-user toilets for our adults, faculty rooms, all of those little things. As we get into the details, there will be additions of IT closets, that's what we start to push towards once we make sure we have these big moves down. Is there anything I didn't cover?
So you say you add the bathrooms in, or am I?
Bathrooms are in here, but they are very basic.
Oh, okay, that little yellow thing?
They are dark gray, so dark gray is your storage and support areas. They're showing three toilets per restroom, but that's a very generic layout, we can mess with that space to get the numbers that we need. The goal was to make sure every pod, so every two grade levels have their own restrooms nearby, but not at the heart of it, so smells and noises are keeping throughout the building, so it happens, happens to evolve. I think when we had those two models, one had a smaller gym, and one had a varsity-sized court, and this has the varsity-sized court. So we are, we would be able to host like a varsity feed in there.
Yeah, are those bleachers fixed, or are they correct?
Practicable, yep.
You can run two practices for one?
With the elements, elementary first, then. We did squeeze the gym a little bit, but it is still, the court is sized for IHSA. When it comes to competition, it's gonna feel, of course, a lot different from a competition gym in there if you had a high school event, but it could happen, but particularly elementary. That goes the same with the alternates, a lot of our goals is to get pre-K to five up and going, and then of course you see those alternates coming in to support our junior senior high school.
And you said that like the library would be like, what, media arts?
In discussions, library, how it's functioning right now for many of the schools is that it is near the classrooms or within the classrooms because they don't have the space for it. near the classrooms or within the classrooms because they don't have the space for it. What we're looking at is for those learning commons to have books catered to K through one or two through three. But that STEM space, depending on, you know, I, I don't make the rules. I give you the space and I say, fill it out however you want it. Depending on what you need, you have a book there. Does that happen in the commons? Does it happen in STEM?
One of the big discussion was just staffing and availability. And we put it in a place and it is a go-to-this-place. That would be one of the specials that would revolve on our first floor. If, if we support active learning media in that zone, the feeling was that it would be more useful in day-to-day life, the learning environment, not having trapes, little kindergarten lakes, all the ways through.
And just that accessibility to books, I think is important. You know, a lot of times our K1, 2, 3 students can, what they're bringing home, they can read and take back the next day. So it could also be much more teacher-driven knowing those levels for those kids. So that's an option too, like. I think that there's multiple ways to move a STEM student around, but um, I think that, I think the goal of that room is to evolve as, as our kids are evolving and as, you know, yes, I love books. Like hey, books can be doubled in classrooms, you know, what can we give them in this space? They might not go again in their classroom. So I think that we're going to have an opportunity to do some more engineering, you know, stuff like that.
Really the default would be as much space in those educational pods as we could to evolve those.
I just love the idea that, you know, when you walk, I never knew where my library was in our old building. So to walk down the hallway to see what's happening, either straight from the commons when I'm going to get my older brother and I see that space, that's what we want. We want kids to be curious and think, oh, this would be cool to try out. The next, any more questions? The next two images is our massing overall. When you look into, I know it's only black and white, but you'll see some shaded rectangles here and there. The goal of that is, I'm not here to design a thing. I'm trying to design something that would interest kids to enter the building. So what we're wanting is pops of color. We've discussed materials. What is that pop color? We haven't fully figured out yet, but we have this big color scheme that are created on the next page. That's focused on the different four pods. And we want that to come out into that exterior of the building. To give excitement, not just for kids, but anybody visiting, that they know that that's elementary. There's materials to it that would mimic the brick that you have on the junior senior high, but it, you know it. Mixing in with the old, but also becoming its own, own building.
Yeah, but like three versions.
A lot of ages.
So we'd like to have the kids to have a little color.
It could be worse. I can work with beige. Some, some movements that we do is push out our second floor or just put more square footage up on the second floor as a natural canopy. So of course, anybody that's trying to get into the building at least has shelter from the rain and all the snow that you guys get all the time every time we visit. The second image is a view kind of down the hill into the playground area.
We said that if we had a massive hill, we'd embrace it and allow that to kind of create the buffer between all the vehicles and people coming and going without having to feel like you're in a fortress. We're, we're taking, we're making some lemonade.
I found this slide. So that's some design for hills. So I'm always going to tell you that. I was really, we don't get to use that. I see them all the time. I'm like, Central Illinois never had that. The following two pages is a layout since I, your staff from elementary, everybody providing information has given us the opportunity to get far in advance in SD. We don't always have blueboards and ideas to get going on things. So I'm sorry. It's a great team to work with, all right? So our interiors team is working in the background of what our pods and learning spaces would look like versus in particular the athletics. The gym would be more of your classic rock ridge versus the four pods and therefore just make colors and Ridge, Prairie, River.
We didn't know if everybody realized that blue is one of your standard. Not one we're going to use.
Well, we do have one logo that does have the blue in it. So it's a little deceiving, but like. And the board mean like your background, your board has the whole blue in it.
We don't know where it came from.
But Taylor said we could.
Just the point.
What if we bring back their, their?
It was mustard.
Okay, so following that is building systems distribution.
Want to take through that?
Yes. Actually, it's like though, the music room, is that open? That's open to above? That shows it is open.
It's enclosed above?
Open to below.
Yeah, it's just a two-story.
It's a taller space.
But it's closed in.
It's closed together. So everybody's not here.
Similar to the gym, how it's open to below. We just want to.
The two-story space, we sliced through it on this.
Cause I thought when we talked the other night at building the ground, that is this area out here though, they could see down?
They can see down into just this. There's a wall that colors here. So nine times out of, or ninety, ninety percent of the time, it's just those nice tall music rooms. If you want to open the door, you can open the door and people can.
This is like the door that's not open to do a concert. What are, what is the door?
It is a three-inch insulated panel. No luck. So this stuff, if you want, if you ever felt sleepy, read through this and we'll have a quiz. This is, at this stage of the game, we have to have for ourselves and really communicate with you all the things that we've, we've talked about. Amazingly, we've made a lot of decisions, how, what's going to heat and cool the building, some of those things. So this is the beginning of the technical piece. It's as important to Andy as probably anybody right now because depending on what the building's made out of and what's in it, or the people he's going to talk to and start working on on the construction side of things. So, but there is a lot of information in here. Some of it's very technical. But this, the boring part of all the things that we do will continue to grow. So for those of you who are very excited about this part, please read through important things like the fire protection system, what a storm shelter is, what we're planning on doing with your sanitary system that is at capacity. And some of these other things, actually it's not here tonight, but John will be excited to see about cabling and all those fun things. So with that, we've got the building program, which you've seen over the years or over the months, it's changed a little bit. We've adjusted the size of the gym from last time. We've got the fifth classrooms of kindergarten, first grade, second grade. And some of the other pieces in there that sort of evolved since the pre-referendum pieces. So that, what this is, is if you will, our scorecard. When we look at the, the drawings by the end of this thing, every one of these spaces should be in, in there. And when Kayla talked about some of the little janitor closets and things like that, they may not show up on this one, but they're accounted for in this reported building. Here's our project schedule and our budget. The one thing I noticed, we just updated this today and had took the previous one had the alternate bids and that construction section already in. We will move and adjust those. We have left all the contingencies in, even though we really added some square footage and some of those things. So as we move into DD and work with Andy's team, the goal is to keep that at the pre-referendum level that we were at, but we haven't, we haven't went through the contingencies and reduced them to appropriately account for those things. So this is as accurate as a square footage cost at this point. So this is, this is where we'd expect to be tracking at this juncture. As we move forward, things like alternate bids, some of those things we've talked about, about secure entries for other spots, parking, fitness interact, those will all be hard costed out along with the overall building. So at the end of this next phase is really when we lock into the final. This is what things are going to cost and this is how we stay on that line. So that's where all those contingencies and things, we can take them down now, but then you have to put them back later. So we prefer to, to move if, if the design is where we want it to be. Our goal is to keep, keep working on. So. At that point, just any, any question? We've, we really enjoyed getting to this point and we're ready to to ramp up and, and start really getting into the nitty-gritty on what everything looks like, not just the outside of the building. Thank you all very, very much. And we'll be, you've got a digital copy of this for your records. We'll go ahead and leave all the hard copies with you. I think we brought 12. Let us know if there's any more to be. And yeah, if we can continue like we've been, it's going to be, it'll be a special blend in, but we're very excited. All right. Thank you. All right, now let's, here we go. This is committed. It looks like we're ready for a closed session. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session where we'll talk about personnel stewardship discipline, school safety, et cetera. All favor? Actually, the back of that operable wall is the easiest. You want to do a David Letterman?
Yeah, Willie Velcro or just self?
Actually, we need to get the, we need to get the band back together. We've been a little upset me up. So that's, that's where we're going to dive in.
I am. Or you want to go down?
And start talking about.
Yeah, that's me. Marcus?
I'm going to see where Brock is and send him this way. I texted him, but.
So yeah, just some time and then we'll want to. Yeah, we'll, we'll send you some notes. Cause at this point, we probably want to get at this.
I know why you covered tonight's.
All right, we'll go back to open session. Start with a roll call.
I'm on it.
Marcus Bush.
Lori Lund.
Jeri Shear.
Tom Parker.
Amy.
Eric.
Amy Ryser.
Eric Fisher O'Shea. Welcome back everyone. All right, let's run through these action items pretty quick here. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to review executive session minutes and approve that the June twenty twenty four to December twenty twenty four minutes remain closed?
So moved.
Amy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I believe yes.
Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for hiring of Sarah Baker as Rockridge High School administrator for the twenty five twenty six school year pending completion of all requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Amy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
And I believe yes. Can I get motion approved for recommendation to destroy recordings of executive session minutes prior to June twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Second.
Drew?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.[1373.78]